Call the roll.
Bird, Jensen, here, Norman, here, Williamson, here, Engstrom.
Here.
Number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, your honor?
Uh, no changes this evening to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Jensen.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Elsabeth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A fiscal year 2024 human service grant recommendations, and I'll turn it over to Councilman Stein.
Runner, um, the committee for human services grants met on May seventeenth at noon. And, uh, as you can see, there's the budget that we had, uh, presented, uh, sixty-seven thousand nine hundred to allocate. Uh, for those of you that don't know, uh, five percent of our local option sales tax revenues go to human services agencies. Um, and you can see some of them up there, Herta, RSVP, Salvation Army. And the requests were just a little bit above what we had to allocate. So, uh, the committee came to a quick consensus on how to allocate that. You can see, uh, we didn't give quite as much to Herta as that they asked for. They asked for quite a lot, and we were able to fully fund almost all of those other entities. Um, it was a very quick meeting, as they usually are. I'll take any questions you have.
Looks good. You want a motion to approve?
Motion, yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Science.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Elsabeth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Okay, next up, number four, report of standing committees, A, policy administration. Uh, I don't think we had any report, did we? Okay, uh, public safety and transportation, David.
Our report, your honor.
Uh, utility committee, Terry.
Uh, we have, we will be having a meeting on June thirteenth at four thirty.
That's, uh, economic development committee, Terry.
Couple of things here, uh, thirty-one thirteen resolution authorizing the execution of a demolition agreement between the city of Boone and sixteen oh eight South Story LLC by Patrick H. Clemens, and I'll turn that over to Bill.
Thank you, sir. So as the council is aware, we have a program in our demolition, uh, program that is a seventy-five twenty-five, where if it, if the building meets a, uh, the city standards on a bu- on a building that needs to come down and the owner wants to keep, uh, ownership of the building, we will participate on a seventy-five twenty-five basis. So this building involves the old Pizza Hut, and, uh, I have talked with Mr. Clemens, and, um, this is the agreement we came up with. Uh, as you know, the city does all the work. Uh, our community service officer will take care of, make sure the asbestos is done and put out the contractors and those things. So if the agreement is approved tonight, then we will start right away on Wednesday with the asbestos inspection for the building. If you'll note in the, in the degree we're participating twenty-five percent, so we will pay the bill, and then Mr. Clemens will reimburse the city seventy-five percent of that within thirty days. And he has agreed that he will construct a commercial building on that site within thirty months. And if he does not, then he will reimburse the city for the money where we participated. Uh, so.
Yes.
Agreement is, I'm sorry.
No, just FYI, the economic development committee voted to, uh, move on with this agreement, so.
So there's a resolution in the packet you, under you, uh, I'm asking that you approve the resolution. Allow me to sign the agreement, and we will move forward.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Norman.
Yes.
Elsabeth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Second one, thirty-one fourteen resolution approving the application of Empire Realty LLC to the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Our workforce housing tax credit program, and Empire is here tonight to answer any of your questions. This is in regard to the two questions built at Eighth and Ringel.
And Brenda, do you have anything on this? I know we talked about it a little bit at ED last time, and so that's why it's on the agenda for approval. This will allow Brenda to submit the application for the workforce tax credits. It needs city approval, and the other resolution is in the packet.
Renderings here of what these buildings will look like.
Do a quick review of what's going up there?
Uh, yeah, you can, sure. Um, eight townhomes, four structures, eight townhomes.
And.
Right, and also this is a former property that was on our demolition list, and so this is basically turned out, uh, very positive. So, um, the project will move forward. Again, council, as approval was needed, uh, for Brenda to send in the applications on the housing credits.
Does it require a lot of steel that, that area?
No. Yes, I.
Okay.
There'll be basements going in there too, so it'll be at the level that it's at now.
I move to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Elsabeth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Norman.
Yeah.
You're good to go. Double in the ground.
Okay, number five, department reports, building official is not with us this evening, uh, finance officer Andrea.
Why, and the consent agenda is the annual, um, resolution for transfers. Um, if there's any questions, I'd be willing to take those options now. Or if we have them after the meeting, I can take those on too. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. City attorney Jim.
No report, your honor.
Uh, director of public works, Wayland.
Thank you, your honor. This short, uh, just let you guys know there is a small boil advisory on for three houses over seven twenty-five South Main, seven twenty-six South Main, and eleven twenty Park Avenue. Contractor was tapping the water main this afternoon and had a mishap and had to shut it down for three, three houses, so very small. I don't foresee any problems with it, just letting you guys know in case anybody calls. Uh, secondly, the traffic signals at Mamie and Story, I don't know if anybody noticed over the weekend, we're in flash. We got hit with a lightning strike, uh, in the thunderstorm Thursday, Friday morning, Thursday afternoon, whatever it was. Um, it looks to me right now with spare parts that I've kept from other cabinets and stuff like that, that I've got it to where it needs to be. Uh, we worked on it three or four times Friday afternoon, and every time I worked on it, it threw me, uh, for another loop and came back with a bigger grim one. So it is on a timer base, so it's not detecting vehicles. It's strictly working on time per intersection or per phase. So I'm letting it do that right now, so it always clears through, and I'm gonna make sure it's running in the background and everything's working before I put it back live, yeah. Hopefully I can do that tomorrow, uh, later this week. And thirdly, citywide cleanup, we made it to sixteenth street, uh, screws are going, all of our trucks are running. We had one minor breakdown today, got that fixed, and we're all vacuuming, right? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Say anything under engineering, Bill?
No, sir.
Uh, public safety. Uh, Chief Adams now with, Chief Weevil.
Thank you, sir. Um, in this current budget year, uh, we had thirty thousand dollars set aside in LOST money, uh, to put new HVAC in the PD, that project is completed, and it came in, uh, quite a bit under budget. So about six thou- or six thousand dollars left over. Um, I would ask that we carry that over so I can, uh, create a women's locker room. Currently, we just have a locker room, um, when this build, when we moved to that building, we only had male officers. Um, that's how it was set up. Obviously, we have a female officer now, and, and I hope within the next, or the July council meeting, we'll have a second one. Um, so we need really to have a, a female locker room space, so asking if we can hold that money over so we can get that project completed.
You need a motion for that?
I believe so.
I should make that motion. I make that motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Elsabeth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next up, city administrator Bill.
Thank you, sir. As you remember, the last council meeting, there was some discussion on updating or change and amending a couple ordinances. They are in the consent agenda, but I put them under my report, uh, because it's your first review. To see if you had any questions on myself or Jim, who put the ordinances together. The first one is ordinance, uh, one seventy-five eighteen under zoning facade downtown. Uh, he added a few words under section two A and then section two B. Uh, has to do with any new construction located in C three Commercial District of Downtown, which is designated the Boone Downtown Center Fund map, which is up on the screen. So it would be this area right here. Farther. So that's the wording. Tonight's the first reading. Uh, again, uh, I'll take any questions, or, or Jim will take any questions on the legal aspect, if you have any of it. Otherwise, you'll, uh, have an opportunity to approve the first reading and the consent agenda. Okay, second ordinance was the parking spaces for, uh, which used to be Boone County Transportation. Uh, now Herta is in there, but Jim has changed it to, uh, the organization providing public transportation. There were five areas that, um, had signs up. There are two that we need to keep to be that, uh, we can take away, or under the ordinance are A, B, and C. We would keep D and E, which, uh, has to do with Sacred Heart as well as West Haven. I forwarded this information to Herta and let them know what council was, uh, looking at doing. They're, they have no comments on it, they're fine with it, there's no issues. So that is the second ordinance in the consent agenda. Oh, I'm not, I'm sorry, you're right, not in the consent agenda, it's under ordinances, not the consent agenda. So you have an opportunity to vote for it, yeah, you're correct. So I'll have any, answer any questions you have on that if you do. Otherwise, I'll move on, just a couple of updates. Uh, staff is still working with catering, uh, properties on the potential development on the fifteen acres the city owns over on South Marion Street. I hope to have some information to you, or at least to the ED committee, uh, by the next council meeting. Uh, lastly, if you, I don't know if you've been in there yet, the auditorium has been completed with the remodel. If you wanna take a chance, look in there, and there's a lot of tables and other stuff, because we're remodeling, uh, others, uh, the second floor, uh, conference room with paint and, and new chairs and like that, but the auditorium's done if you wanna take a peek. Unless you have any questions, that's my report.
Okay, number six, consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda you would like removed and discussed separately? And if not, I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Call the roll.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Norman.
Yeah.
Elsabeth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Okay, number seven, ordinances, A, second reading ordinance twenty-two eighty-eight to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the all-terrain and off-road vehicles ordinance by amending chapter seventy-seven, section seventy-seven point zero four seven by deleting sixteen years of age and replacing it with eighteen years of age.
Oh, second.
Call the roll.
Bird. Vincent.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Elsabeth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Okay, B, first reading ordinance twenty-two eighty-nine to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the C three Limited District Zoning Regulations ordinance, chapter one seventy-five, section one seventy-five point one eight ten.
I move.
Second. Call the roll.
Jensen.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Elsabeth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
C, first reading, uh, ordinance twenty-two ninety to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the parking regulations ordinance, chapter sixty-nine by deleting Boone County Transportation, replacing it with the organization providing public transportation to the citizens of Boone, adding code section sixty-nine point zero six seventeen and deleting code sixty-nine point one nine one A, B, and C.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Science.
Yes.
Norman.
Yeah.
Elsabeth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Okay, number eight, uh, Mayor Scott, I have no comments this evening, number nine, council member comments.
Yeah, a couple, your honor, um, we had a great night of Nights on the Green event last Friday. Um, I wanna thank the mayor and Jim and Linda for coming down there and, and, and participating. It was a, a great event. Carol Renee's Dance Studio was there, we had tons of kids' activities at twenty-eight or twenty-nine craft vendors there. Um, about the same amount of cars, we had a car show and everything else, had about seven hundred people in and out of the gate, so it's pretty good event, so I encourage you guys to come down next July, it's Hero's Night. It's usually a big night for us, we're gonna have, uh, bike raising and, uh, elected officials there, so.
And weather cooperated.
Yeah, weather cooperated, you know, all week long, we kept, gonna rain on us, and it didn't, it stayed nice all night, so a little warm, but that wasn't that. But like I said, Hero's Night next July seventh, so if you can come down and go ahead, we really appreciate it. And the second thing is the railroad crossings, if you've been across Story and green streets, they're phenomenally better.
Lot better.
That's, that's all I have, your honor.
Any other council comments?
I had a couple, um, well, right now, the library is having their summer reading kickoff carnival, so there's a lot of people down there. I was down there earlier, hot as always, but a lot of people having a lot of fun. Um, the summer reading program is kicking off, and it's open to adults too, so make sure you sign up for that, uh, over the summer. Um, and then I had another, uh, item that a citizen who wanted to come to the meeting to, uh, present this can't because of medical reasons, uh, for, uh, the, uh, Transportation Safety Committee, uh, she wanted to let them know that she's concerned about traffic control on Division and Mamie. And I know that's come up before, I just wanted to put it on their radar if it's something that they've, uh, been thinking about. So, she's concerned about it, and I told her that I would bring it up.
One thing I wanted to mention is, I do have copies, if anyone wants one, um, that I, we hand out, and this is just a copy that's, it's, uh, titled What's Going On in Boone, and this is just a set of, I think there are about twenty-five questions and, and, uh, issues that came up, um, from citizens, and Bill Skare went over them and myself, and so, um, it's part of, I guess, what I'm aiming for is just, uh, more transparency and making sure that people are aware of, uh, what the city's doing and, and what some of those decisions are, so anyone that wants a copy, um, be sure and ask me afterwards, and I've got those.
Other council comments? Any public comments or items not on the agenda? Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I'm Marty Lamori, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Boone Public Safety Center. I'm a board member there, and, um, we are excited as a board to see the actions that have been taking place um, as far as looking at, um, um, renovating the downtown and bringing, um, some changes to that. Um, I know there's an ad hoc committee in the state council, as well as, um, uh, the chamber have been all involved in getting that started. I've been on your downtown Boone Facebook, they've looked at all the renderings of the drawings of the, uh, um, assessment that was done and some ideas. Um, what I wanted to say on behalf of the Hifte Center is that, um, we're excited to have, um, changes come that are going to enhance downtown Boone and keep historical look in keeping with the Hifte Center. Coming at the gateway end, and we got a compliment, and we're excited that we're kind of a nice space when we first drive into town. Um, and we work hard to try to keep the property, um, in shape for that reason. Uh, and we'd like to still see, you can see, we need to complete this, uh, historical look in the buildings and, uh, places everyone come down and gather. Um, and I know there's a proposal for Dollar General to tend to become a new. And I guess we just feel like the typical look of the front of one of those buildings isn't maybe in keeping with wanting to keep sixth through ninth street, um, or if you want to build a historical look. Um, I know there were several options that were laid out, so we just support, we get some options to keep that historical charming book or, um, whichever of them. Thank you.
And I think we have, I know Bill has talked to him, um, and kind of expressed some of our wishes that we would like the front of that, uh, building, and, and, uh, so I think that's, that's kind of where it's at, is, is we have said that we would prefer some brick or masonry kind of on the front and dressing it up a little bit, because it is the entryway into our downtown area.
More than a preference changing that ordinance there, is that.
Yes.
And even not only on the front side, but on the north and south sides as well. Um, so that's making sure that, that has to happen.
Anything visible from Story.
Okay, so you have an ordinance, as I understand.
Yeah.
Change the address.
And new.
So.
But, but it also applies to that entire area, right? It doesn't just apply to this building, any new construction in downtown Boone.
Okay.
Have to comply with that ordinance.
Okay, so it's a step in, in trying to make sure we do get some of those improvements as we look at the downtown area. And, yeah, we also are working on that Main Street application, which will be next year. And part of what they, uh, really promote is that historic renovation for your downtown, so we will be trying to keep a lot of that this thing.
I think we're gonna, we're revisiting BID for that exact reasons.
Yeah. Have to be changing too.
Or.
Yeah, I'd probably go more blunt about the whole thing. If you don't know about the Main Street project, it's been tried once in Boone, and they knew they weren't gonna make it. Now, they've got a great committee, and they're gonna get this thing through. What Main Street will do for this community is millions of state dollars coming in here. Look at Grundy Center, Iowa, look at Iowa Falls, Iowa. I'm acquainted with both those projects, their Main Streets are fantastic, their buildings are filled, they're nicely done, and what they simply do annually is resubmit, not a lot of work, and a state writes me a check for five hundred thousand dollars to go on. Now, if you put a tin building up on there, a Dollar General, you're not gonna get a Main Street project. They're gonna walk away from you laughing. Keep it out of here.
Nobody's talking about putting up a tin building there anyway.
Pardon me?
Nobody's talking about putting up a tin building.
That's why we changed the ordinance.
I don't care what they're talking about, a Dollar General is a Dollar General.
Well, I don't care what we're talking about, but an ordinance is an ordinance and has to be complied with, so I think they represent.
Shop in with it, huh?
Pardon?
Forget it.
The suggestion that it's going to be tin is, is not even close to what's gonna happen.
Yes.
Can I ask, and if, if, has it actually, is it definitely a signed deal that Dollar General is going there? I'm just asking, it is?
We, this council had numerous meetings and discussions, published notice after notice, made the decision to go ahead with the transaction with Dollar General. We have a written agreement that's binding upon city of Boone to sell it, and so that is, is the direction it's going. Pardon? What'd you say?
I said it's a horrible decision to predict with Dollar General. Here it is.
Well, all right.
It's my opinion.
You have your opinion, that's fine.
Yes.
I appreciate the ordinance change, I'm wondering if there's any change to signage. Will it still be on the story, is there a big huge, you know, across the entire store? Makes us look like a discount.
Are you talking about the Dollar General store?
Yeah.
Now, that'll, that'll all be worked on in, in, when we receive a site plan. Keep in mind, their site plan goes to P and Z, it's gotta be approved by P and Z, brought forward to council. Council has the final decision.
So at, at this point, do we know if the store for an estate in Story Street? The entrance and.
Not, no.
Or is.
No. No, we have a purchase agreement with it, the sale has not gone through, they have till the middle of July. That's the deadline of, for us to close on, on the property. And then if that happens, then as we go forward, they will submit a site plan, and then staff will look at it as well as the P and Z, and, and the final decision comes to council. Council follows the ordinance, uh, when that comes through on what they can and can't do, and they're advised by the city attorney. Uh, in addition to that, I've had several conversations with the broker who's handling the sale. They're well aware of what our expectations are, as well as the mayor sent them a letter in the middle of May of expressing what his expectations were for this project and what the building would look like. And that has been passed on to corporate.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I was here last month. Thought about it, um, the Dollar General, we need that business. We've been tired twenty years, there's nothing been built up in Boone, nothing. It's, I mean, our stores are terrible, the tree too bad, and tree darn with the damn. And you said, we need to get some state money, federal money, need to get a clinic, go down, like, together. They sent us some money to boom. You need ten million dollars to help this city. Trying to get money from fairway, but I can't get a rental, so let it go. So whatever, this, you know, I'm for Dollar General, we need, that place up there, fairways, spent forty years. Remember going up there and playing when I was a kid? Boone needs to do something. I'm, I'm for Dollar General, I want to build a nice building, and if you make them put a brick in, that's fine, they won't tend, no big but we need some progress in this freaking town. I mean, we got one of the best stores in, in the good in Iowa, the very amount of population out there, we can't get ten million dollars. There's something wrong with Denmark. We need to fix this freaking town up, we need to get on the ball. Month after month, year after year, I could have to charge twenty years, I shouldn't run for the council. We got something done, we gotta get hold some state people grasping, around, get going, get this town moving. I mean, probably days, I mean, it's beautiful, the race track makes tons of money. People complain about it, but it's a good, good fun for Boone, but we need to get on the ball, make some, get some committee. All I can say.
Thank you.
I was burned, I haven't been on the council that long, but I'm really proud of the progress we've been making, and we are really pursuing trying to improve our downtown area. That is really, I guess that's one of the reasons I ran for council, and that's really a focus. Um, we are, we just had a group of volunteers, what was it, two weeks ago, that, that volunteered on a Sunday afternoon to clean it up, and they went and washed windows and just started cleaning it up. We had another group that planted some plantings in those four corner areas, um, to fix those up. We are looking at, we have a group that is looking at replacing a lot of the trees. We have good trees down there, and, and I actually walked it, and we have seventeen trees, if you wanna know, that are right in those two blocks that are still healthy trees. Then we've got a lot of empty places that need something, so.
Go from the ninth store to walk to sixth store, and tell me what needs to be fixed down there. You, you can say, fountain need to walk down there, go over to ninth store, sixth store, look at all that trees that are tearing up the site. I don't grow wood, married thirty years ago, I told them, man, don't cut trees down, because the square side, all you want to talk about like today.
Right.
There's a lot of, there's a ton, people gonna get hurt, crippled on that stuff, the city's gonna get a lot of lawsuits, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well.
Gotta get them on the ball.
Alls I know is we have an arborist that's working with us and, and. Right, it's recommending a tree that will fit that space and won't, should not cause problems that way. So we're really doing a lot of research and looking at it, we're not just kind of tossing things in there and, and hoping they work. Uh, so I guess I'm, I'm feeling like we're making progress, and, and I will continue to say that, because I, I really see people working hard to make this downtown. Um, it doesn't happen overnight, we're trying if we can, if we can become a Main Street community.
Rest of summer, you watch their territory, tree got, put a new cover, I went out to Moyn, and get ten men, construction workers, we have all done very fine. All you gotta do is come up with a minute.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I, I like the trees, so I, I'm not gonna encourage somebody to take them out, but.
I'd just like to say, I was, I don't know, we have to meet at seven twenty-five, that square space where there used to be a tree. It's not being ground out, the tree stump's still there, so whenever you put mulch in there, it just washes out every time it rains or blows. I know they didn't wanna spend the money on grinding out a tree stump, because when we had delivery building, I cut that tree down. They said they were not gonna grind that out either. So I'm just saying, if we wanna make this look nice and not have all the mulch in the arborist pool, or all over the sidewalk instead of being.
or all over the sidewalk instead of being in that spot, we need to use up with the stumps that are up currently there already.
I'll just say one more thing, council, next council meeting, there is a group coming that's talking about that plan and the proposal, and getting rid of the, preparing those areas and putting perhaps some grates there, and anyway, they're, they're working on, on how that can be handled.
I was part of that group to help do the cleanup on those four corners.
Very good, very good.
For about one week, it's downtown, but I go to Fair, look at what they have, and they even got some of the restaurants, being able to have some of the parking spots with a patio sitting, sitting, that people can sit outside on that. So it's just those kind of things that just draw attention, it's like, those are the things like.
And it's people that want those things to happen, so that's, that'll help.
Okay, any other public comments? Uh, this meeting is adjourned.